All right, we'll go into first right off the bat, we'll go into public comments. This is time for public comments regarding issues or matters not on the agenda, but still within the jurisdiction of the city council of Waireka. Public comments period is not intended to question and answer period or conversations with the council or staff. Council members when recognized by the mayor may ask questions of presenter, but no action may be taken by the city council during the public comment section of this meeting, except to direct staff to prepare or report or place an item on future agenda. Hello Josh, so this is time for public comments. Is there anybody that wants to add any public comments? Do we have anybody on Zoom even? We will go right into this. What this is about is the flood hazard reduction project. We've got some, we have an anxious person to talk about that here. We'll start off with Randy, is there anything we want to start off with as a city wise? We just want to go into straight into presentation with Jerry Mosher, or what would be the most convenient for us?
My understanding was he is here to educate a couple council people.
So, yes.
On this, though I have seen the presentation. But no, we don't have anything.
Okay, and we'll go from there once if there is any questions, obviously. So if anybody has any questions as we go, try to hold the questions back and ask appropriately. And ask me where, what direction we need to go. But I'd like to have Jerry be able to give his full presentation and then write down some notes and then give, ask some questions if we can, unless there's something that's pertinent at that very point in time that you might forget or something that I didn't mean to look at you when I said that. I did though, sorry. That was wrong, that was totally, totally wrong. Okay, all righty then, we will start right off with you Jerry. Thank you very much for coming.
I am so happy and thankful for you guys. I know you've been to a lot of meetings and you had one just last night and plus your whole day. I really appreciate you being here tonight to work with us on the FHR. It's awesome.
Appreciate you bringing us up to speed on some of this because even us, the rest of us has been involved.
Is that mic on?
Oops, I have a little tap on it.
Do I need to do, speak closer to it?
You may have to move yourself closer to it.
Okay, yeah. How's that?
That better?
Is it working, Arthur?
I can hear, but it's not great.
Okay, I'll try to boost it. I'm Jerry Mosher, I live at 1009 Northridge Drive here in Waireka. And I am a member of the Siskiyou Gardens, Parks and Greenway Association, and which is a nonprofit that contributes to the community and likes to partner with the city on its parks primarily, and it's also the community garden and it's Siskiyou Arboretum and the Waireka Creek Greenway. I began with the Greenway back in 1988, when my forest supervisor, the Clamath Forest, I was working for the Forest Service at the time, asked that I cooperate or work with them to develop some plans for the Greenway behind the museum, the county museum. And I've been there ever since, I've been working on it ever since. I do have a couple asked, and this is just so I don't forget it later on, our board, and I better get my glasses, but to read. Our board asked two things, and one is to establish and adequately, adequately fund a city FHR project contact person and team, who has adequate time and skills to successfully perform the remaining FHR project element. And the second one is to establish and involve an FHR advisory committee of experienced community members and experts familiar with the FHR project. And with that, I'll just get in, go in here. I've used the word term FHR a couple of times. I should back up to make sure that everybody, including the people on Zoom or whatever, are familiar with that term. FHR means flood hazard reduction, reducing flood hazards within Waireka Creek. And the project that we're speaking about, the FHR project, is a project that was funded by the Department of Water Resources to award $5 million to do various planning, environmental review, public outreach, construction, purchase of streamside lands and channel widening along Waireka Creek in selected locations. We'd love to do the whole creek, but five millions isn't even close. Sorry, and we, so we focused on important areas. Okay. I'm audible so far?
Great.
Okay, thank you. In 1988, the Greenway was started and by a few people in this town. One was the forest supervisor, the Clamath Forest. One was the county supervisor Patty Mattingly. And the third was education superintendent, and I can't remember her name right now. I apologize for her, but I.
Barbara Dillon?
No.
Then would have been Frank Calerica who signed that, or it would have been one woman?
She was a woman, but she might not have been the superintendent then. Anyway, I'll have to, well, I can't remember her name right now.
No worries.
So they generated the idea, and that's in my PowerPoint, but I basically want to say the idea was for four and a half mile long, continuous fish friendly, clean water wetland habitat with public city park, Greenway and Trail through Waireka along four and a half miles of Waireka Creek and Green Horn, portions of Green Horn Creek. And so since that time, 1988, there's been 11 major projects completed, starting with the Greenway Visitor Center behind the museum in 1993, which included Murals Bridge, Trail, etc. Then we had two major floods in 1997 and 2005. Then we performed a floodplain restoration at Oberlin, along the Oberlin portion reach of the Greenway, north of Oberlin Road. Then, and then when I say we, I mean we, the city, and the Siskiyou Gardens, Parks and Greenway Association in partnership, performed the Greenhorn Park Phase One Floodplain and Reservoir Restoration Project. In 2015, we performed a Deer Creek Trailhead Floodplain and Restoration. And then in 2016, the FHR project, this project we're talking about tonight, funded the Greenway Master Plan and Environmental Impact Report, which is a lot of work involved by a lot of experts, a lot smarter than me. Let's see, okay, and then in 2017, Oberlin Greenway Trailhead and Bridges were built. And then in 2018 and 19, two different school bioswale projects were created at Evergreen School and Waireka High School to capture water pollution and make habitat for local pollinators and other birds and other wildlife. And the idea of the pollution was to capture the pollution so it never got to Waireka Creek. This is pollution off of parking lots primarily. Then in 2020, I believe, it might have been 19, the FHR grant was able to purchase land along one of the reaches that's a FHR purchased between Lennox Street and Montague Road on the east side of the creek. Beautiful piece of property. And then the Oberlin Filtration Pond Bioswale Project was installed in 2020 to capture more pollution and from 150 acres of Waireka and make habitat. And the last one in 2021, we're working on, about to finish it right now, is lower Waireka Creek Salmon Habitat. It's out of the city limits, it's down by the Shasta River. That's our, we've been busy and those are just like important elements that this FHR project has contributed to and can build upon. Okay, with that, I think it'd probably be best, Arthur, if you want to start up that PowerPoint presentation on the first slide, which would be a green one. Yeah, 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 thank you. Oh boy, I wish I could remember that lady's name. Oh gosh, anyway, in 1998, they were part of an economic task force for Waireka and they were a quality of life subcommittee. And their phrase was develop a Waireka Creek Parkway as a model of civic pride with a theme of restoration of aquatic and fisheries resources. And it was a great vision and it remains today. Excellent, please Arthur. This is an overview of Waireka, and it includes some of the extent of the Greenway Master Plan, the primary portion that where there's the most perennial waters and the most developments and potential for flood hazard, infrastructure damage. You can see on the lower right, that's Waireka Interstate Five going up to the upper left, and the Waireka Creek flows parallel and crosses, of course, I five a couple of times, or underneath it, I mean. The Greenhorn Reservoir is down at the bottom, you can see, and Greenhorn Creek comes into Waireka Creek at that point, which is near the fairgrounds, Sharps Road. And then if we move on to the left, you can see the creek meandering through town up towards the star on the left and leaving town. The shaded blue area is the 100 year flood zone mapped by FEMA for orientation. And you can see there are some areas that are significant overlap with residences and businesses and infrastructure like fairgrounds and everything else. Important aspect there. Next slide please. So Waireka Creek, it's a cool place, it's attractive, attractive to many people. It flows the entire length of Waireka, as do pieces of Juniper Creek and Greenhorn Creek. Its cool waters are really valuable and essential actually for ocean going steelhead and salmon that do come up in the creek. And I've seen them, and I haven't seen a lot of the big ones lately. I wish I could say I'd seen more, there may be some fish folks, like maybe Janay who's online, I think, that can say more about what you have seen. But I haven't seen a lot lately, that's not that they're not there, but they're few. It's also an attractive refugia for Waireka citizens, and right now includes our homeless, which is understandable. It's a safe place, relatively safe for them, and it's a place they can go and feel like they have a place of their own. But the creek itself and the surrounding areas is very flood prone, and it has been over time channellized like a ditch or a pipe because of that past landfills, actually originally with the dredger mine that happened over about half maybe of the Waireka Creek in town. So it's flood prone, and there's ways to fix it. Next. So the goals that we, the Greenway Master Plans have identified are primarily to improve habitat for people, fish and wildlife, and to continue the voluntary citizen landlord cooperation. It isn't like we're going to go steal somebody's land or take it away on, they're not willing to part with. It's all volunteer. And the idea is that if we can find local areas that are important to flood reduction, flood hazard reduction, and the landowners interested in selling, then we may have a deal, an opportunity. And this flood hazard reduction project has funds to do exactly that. And it's a goal to do that. Let's see, other goals are to protect the steelhead salmon, wildlife and plant habitats, maintain water quality and quantity, which this slideshow was done back in 2011, and since then, the MS four requirements and other things are making it more difficult for our community to, to do anything because of the requirements which are necessary to keep our water quality high. Then another primary goal is to conserve open space for the human element, recreation, tourism, non-motorized noise transportation through town, rather than having to drive a car, we can walk or drive or ride your bikes. Next please. But like we mentioned earlier, it's flood prone, and this is a historic photo from the, I think it was 1861, and they described it as a mini Niagara Falls. It was like 250 feet wide across this area where there was, I guess, a railroad track bridge that went across the creek. And there are multiple falls and cascades going into the, to the creek at this point during this flood of 1861. But there are many, many other floods. And most recent ones are the 64 flood, and then the 97 flood and the 2005 flood. Next Arthur please. So 2006 is our most recent flood. With the climate change, who knows what's going to happen with our flooding, but what we're hearing is the flooding in general is going to be, whatever the weather is, it's going to be more extreme. And we don't know exactly what that means for Waireka, but the 2006 flood events threatened many structures in town, undermined the Raymond Street Bridge and places along its abutment. One, there was one fatality of one young lady that drowned in the creek during that time. Let's see, so anyway, these are two local spots here in Waireka. The left one is Miner's Street, right at Miners Inn, and Bathling Works Bridge on the right. Enjoy the next slide please. The focus of this project, the FHR project, one of the three reaches or segments of the creek are the central reach in the Clamath National Forest Service Center. And these photos are from there, the upper left one is with the flood not there, that was before the flood. And that bridge there and that narrow confined channel, concrete channel, was just blown out when the, when the flood came in 2000, December 31st, 2005, January 1st, 2006. And these photos are of that flooded bridge area in the Clamath National Forest Service Center area. And they wanted to partner with us to do some flood protection. The next slide please. There's a couple more examples of the floodway. This is again that Raymond Street on the backside of Bathling Works. That's the bridge on the upstream side is the side that was scoured at the abutments. And then this photo on the bottom is a photo of a near Oberlin Road looking south towards, towards the fairgrounds, if you will. And just a lot of uncontrolled water everywhere. And again, it's like the creek itself has become more of a ditch and a pipe rather than a wide floodplain that, like it used to be, which would naturally spread things out in an area that was less developed by infrastructure. Next slide. So the hot topic, if you will, of the FHR project is floodplain restoration, and the intent is hydrological floodplain restoration. That's the goal, to reduce flood hazards. There are other kinds of restoration we'd like to have done at the same time, vegetative habitats and aquatic water quality habitats and things like that. But the primary focus of this FHR project is on reducing flood damage in Waireka. And again, a million dollar damage in 2006, and to restore the floodplain back into sponge-like condition, like you see on those cross sections. The upper cross section is more like what a lot of Waireka Creek looks like now. It's a very narrow channel, very steep and high. And normal floods will just top that real easily and spread out into adjacent developments and scour away and all the way, hopefully not any people. And the bottom cross section shows the, the general intent is just to widen and lower the floodway so that the 100 year flow events can pass through safely and not damage adjacent properties. Like you see some examples at the bottom there. And so the Waireka Creek Greenway Master Plan focuses on all the way through designing the floodways so that a 100 year, 100 year flood event will pass safely through the town. Next please.
Does that house on the lower right survive?
I don't think so. I don't think it's there anymore.
That would too promising though.
So that makes it a mobile home. Sorry.
Yeah, it was mobile.
Yes.
Almost anyway. Okay, and this is an example of, in 2007, the city got its first funding to do a restoration project on Waireka Creek by the Department of Water Resources, again, same grantor as this FHR project. And what happened there was 40,000 cubic yards, which is 4,000 dump truck loads of fill were removed from next to the creek and moved to the adjacent area. You see on the, on the photo to the left, or in the middle, I guess, there's blue and gold. The gold area is where the fill was placed onto another private property. And we bought some of that private part of property and excavated within the blue. And then we had a really generous donation by Scott Kimball, donated out of the good of his heart to the city and the Greenway, eight acres, which makes the heart of the first Greenway in Waireka that's substantial in terms of flood. And so the intent was to basically do that excavation in the blue, the blue area, that would again be where the flood zone would be safely controlled and contained. And then these upland areas are now available to commercial and residential use without any flood insurance, because it's going to be remapped by FEMA. And then on the right photo at the bottom, it just shows a side channel that doesn't look like a side channel, looks like high desert, but during a high water event, the water will rush right through there and disperse and soak into the ground rather than all washing down to the ocean. We get some of it kept in our water for local here. Next please. This is a photo example on the top of a bridge abutment that was part of a railroad bridge to the, a mill, local mill here near Oberlin Road. And then the bottom photo shows how that same location was turned into a bridge abutment or a pedestrian footbridge that we built later. But you can see behind that abutment, how the land has been lowered down. That's part of another side channel that was built to absorb floodwaters during the high water events. And now that's turned into a really cool wet one. And of course, we'll, nevermind, I could go on too long, so I won't. Next slide please. So this, on the right is an aerial photo showing the footprint of the 100 year floodplain before and after this restoration of the floodway was done. So before, both the green and the blue areas were the total flood zone for the 100 year floodplain. And then after the restoration was done, only the blue areas are the areas that will be containing water during the 100 year of flood event. And then a lower left photo is just another side channel, photo of another side channel. Next please.
I'm sorry Jerry.
Yeah, no.
It showed Oberlin Road being in blue, so is that, should we plan on that being flooded?
Could you, could you go back, Arthur please? I'm sorry, what was that, Jeff?
Oberlin Road is in the blue?
Yes, it is.
So will that, is it possible that that road will be flooded out in a 100 year situation?
It is possible until we do restoration upstream from the road.
Okay.
Yeah, and, and when we do that also, the parking lot that's right there, the trailer parking lot would be excavated down or next to it would be also, because we couldn't do that. There's an intent to make a trail go through there underneath the bridge. And so, I'm actually, I'm sort of confused on that. Maybe the parking lot is not, is or is not affecting that blue zone, but I know that for sure upstream from Oberlin, that restoration would shrink that, that flood zone down to a narrow spot again. And would not, it would not go under, would not go over Oberlin Road.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, so this, this slide basically shows in a real nutshell what the FHR project's elements are. And the first two are done, yahoo! The environmental analysis, which was huge, huge job. And then the updating of the Greenway Master Plan to accommodate floodway planning and, and flood safe recommendations for the whole town, and not just along the creek or Greenhorn and Waireka Creek, but also along some of our minor tributaries where they're still flooding along the residences, like the, how do you? Glad to see you. So yeah, it affects, it has recommendations for some of those minor tributaries as well, and options for keeping the rest of the community that's upstream from the creek, but in the town, flood safe as well. Really good projects that are identified for that. Okay, in addition to the master plan then, there are three that you see in bold, North Reach, Central Reach and South Reach. Reach is a fancy name for a piece of the creek. So we have three different pieces of the creek that we wanted to tackle as first priority that were either available or high priority or both. And the North Reach, the goal was to purchase the land along the creek in that reach. And then secondly, to install floodway protection measure, do a restoration of the same place. This central reach was, we didn't have to buy it because the county and the Forest Service already own it, and they wanted to be active partners. And they, so basically the deal was, let's just restore that area that they allow and see if they'll make it work. And then the South Reach is, was a target for, primarily for purchase. And if there are money left over from the other elements, then we would also do restoration. But it's not like we thought, where we knew how far the money would stretch. And then the last bullet there relates to a maintenance fund, and I think it's around $140,000, something like that, that is put in the bank, so to speak, and the interest of that can be applied for a long time forever to do floodway clearing and management to protect the floodways and keep it going and keep it safe. Next slide please. And this overhead photo shows the town with the three reaches that I just mentioned, the left one being the purple box being the North Reach, and then the Central Reach in the middle box and the South Reach on the, in the box on the right. That's just general locations. You can also see the city boundary, the city limits, and Interstate Five and the flood zone all in one spot. Next. Okay, now these maps will zoom in on the three regions. So this reach again, the North Reach focuses up by Montague Road. And these maps have two primary colors, green and gold. The green is where the proposed, the Greenway would direct the excavation to happen, so the floodway would be within the green areas only. And the gold areas would be the excavated dirt moved out and placed there for keeping the properties out of the flood zone or piling up mounds like berms for sound barriers and, and other kinds of ecological benefits. So that, that's in general what the colors mean. In the middle of the green, of course, there's the blue, which is the main creek. And then you may see some smaller blue lines, those are side channels that would be played, placed along through the creek to widen and let the water flow out away from the central creek. And you'll also see some red lines that are preliminary trail locations. And these, this, this map, the North Reach and all these reaches I'm going to talk about, these are preliminary designs. There are more refined designs that happen after, you know, you get into the details of things and you determine who's going to buy or sell or not, and that kind of a thing. In this particular case, we were able already, the FHR project, to purchase the lands between Lennox Street and Montague Road on the east side of the creek. And so I guess I can, that's basically from here to here's Lennox. Yeah, yeah, that's Lennox. So this stretch right here, it's a big open, empty parcel, and we're able to purchase that. And so I think we can probably go to the next, oh, well, actually I can say just, part of the willing seller process is that we have an appraisal done, and then the willing seller goes, oh, I'm not willing anymore. So we've had some of those on this. And, and I, I don't know whether or not it's too late to convince some. And, and I, I'm, I don't know whether or not it's too late to convince somebody or talk to them about it because there's some strategic locations there that it would be nice to purchase. And I don't really see why they wouldn't do it. Other than maybe money, but like one of the benefits of this reach also I need to point that out is that the Burgess Street residential area will be removed from flood zone. And the North Wairega Shopping Center, a lot of that would be removed from the flood zone too. From the hundred year flood zone. Next please. The central reach is the reach basically behind, between the I-5 and the museum and Forest Service, Plan of National Forest Service Center. And as we discussed before, both this county and the Forest Service said, yes, we want to partner up with that, this project and allow some of these lands to be used for a floodway so that it actually is going to keep our museum from flooding and our Forest Service properties from flooding. So they were very, you know, willing partners and no additional cost. That would involve though, for the Forest Service, removing several buildings they're not using anymore. And I can say that because I used to work, that's, that's true. There were some that they are still using and there's one fire cash building they definitely need to keep and it's in the wrong spot. It's in a floodways zone. So part of the project was to go ahead and relocate that to a higher ground on the west side of the creek. So that's all part of the design that the city and everybody can get into later, the discussions about Forest Service and that. Next slide please. This is the South Reach and at the top of your, your image there, that's Overland Road and the bottom where it kind of kicks over to the left, that's Greenhorn Creek coming into and connecting with Wairega Creek. That triangle at the bottom, the darker triangle, that's Waiahaa Trether Park. And again, the green is the excavated zone with a hundred year floodplain, plain could be, zone could be excavated and made available to keep us high and dry. And then the golden areas are again, the areas where the fill could be laid out in various different configurations depending on the needs of the landowner, the Greenway, all of our partners. See, and, and that, that stretch also, there are also three willing seller letters that we have. We've had a couple of refusals and again, a couple of those bite, we might want to try them again. I don't know. I hope so. Because the amount that they're, they're asking for is not very much money. But I'm not a freezer. Next please. Oh, can I, can I go back just a second on that one? Sorry. This South Reach is the lower priority right now, just because of a lot of partnership things, but there's a possibility that after we purchase some lands and we can also do some restoration, if there's any money left in the overall project. Okay, now this is just a series of slides that you can kind of flash up and on between this one and the next one. You want to do that a couple of times, Arthur? Want to flash off and on between this slide and the next slide a few times? Yeah, back and forth a few times. See the difference in the flood zone?
Oh, yeah.
Yeah. Okay, now leave it with the big one on, please. Now, Arthur, good. So this is the North Reach and this is more than the North Reach, but it includes the North Reach, which is again, is from Montague Road down to Lennox Street, which is really about the top third of this map. But the idea is that these flood zones are the, this is the hundred year FEMA flood zone. And if we followed and had the money to do the entire Greenway master plan, it would look like the next one. Go ahead and show the next one, Arthur, please. It would all look like that. As it is, the North Reach, the, the FHR purchases would do that, but only to the top third. So I don't want to be misleading on this. It's not the entire picture, but the top third of the picture between Montague Road and Lennox would, don't look like that in terms of flood protection, not flooding Burgess Street neighbors and the Wairega Shopping Center. Next please. Yeah, perfect. Okay, Central Reach, same thing, Arthur, could you kind of flip that off and on a few times? And then leave it on. Perfect, perfect. Okay, so the Central Reach, just to get, maybe to get you oriented again, because I know this is hard to tell what's going on. This area right here, that's the PNF Service Center. And then over there, that's the outdoor museum and then there's a museum building right there. And that's the kind of the general stretch for the Central Reach that the FHR would be funding the, the restoration of. And again, Arthur, could you just flip that back to what it would be like in terms of flood zone? Yes. Quite a difference. Okay, next. South Reach, the real obvious thing in this picture that everybody wants to go, what the heck is that circle? That's the track at the, at the fairgrounds. Yeah. And so then basically the upper half or the left, left half is where the south, have that run. Make sure I get oriented here. Yes, okay.
Jerry, did you skip over some pages in your presentation?
No, I don't think so.
Oh, you might be out of order or something.
Yeah, because I'm on Central Reach is next.
We're on South Reach now.
Yeah, we did Central, that was one of the Forest Service area. You got some collating issues probably, you know? Okay, so on the South Reach, it's between Overland and where Greenhorn Creek comes in and Sharps Basin where the Waiahaa Trether Park is. So Waiahaa Trether Park up to, to the north to Overland Road, that is the South Reach. That is the South Reach, it's in the FHR project. And that area has three willing sellers, two of them are kind of not working with us, one is. And we might be able to make it work with one, but it's going to be kind of dicey. And again, on the right here, that's the fairgrounds. That's a major area. It has a lot of opportunity. And with the state county ownership there, I think that there could be some really good things happening there to resolve a lot of that. But that's out of this project, so I'm kind of, shouldn't talk about it too much. Okay, next please. And that, yeah, looking at, that's good, Arthur. So on the, on this one, the left half of that, that picture is really where the South Reach is and how narrow it is. But you can see how that there is, Waiahaa does have a, a channel on both sides of it. It's almost like an island because it's so low and it's in this basin that's very low. That used to be all marshes back in the day. It was very lowland area. Okay, then next please. I think this might be near the end. Yeah. So that's, well, I think that might be the end of my yakking here. Yeah, the only thing that I can say is that regarding the Central Reach, the Forest Service stuff there, that there's a lot of complications with design and coordination between engineers of different agencies and it's, it's a mess and it's been a long time and I, it's just hard. So I, there are options that we might have to be forced to take, to take that money for that project and move it somewhere else. And I'm just hoping not have to do that, but it may be something we're forced to do. And the worst part about that is it may lose us some time on the planning and design and all that. But hopefully there's flexibility in the state spending, which is coming, coming due. So I think that's all I have to offer and thank you for your interest.
Jerry, if you don't mind, you have any questions in the council, would you mind answering some of them?
If I could.
Okay, awesome. Awesome. We have some, okay, great. Jerry, how much, we should know this already, but how much money do we have left in the grant?
I think it's about over three million left.
Two or three million?
Three million.
Three million?
Over three million left. I think that's what Randy shared with me today.
I sent an email today that answers that. I don't have it with me, I'm sorry.
Hey, dude, do you want it?
Yeah, there's, in the, there's two grants that are working on this and one has 3.7 million and the other has 1.14 million.
That's, I don't know if that's remaining of Randy, right?
Matt, do you want to answer that?
Yes, hello, I am there. I was just pulling that up on a different format in my email so I can clarify that for you. The printed version of the email is a little bit skewed. So the Prop 1E commitments of 3.7, Prop 84 was commitment of 1.14. And there's liquidation numbers of Prop 1E, which is the spend it down, money be done with it of 2.7 and the property forehead 776.
So a total of three and a half million left.
Say that again, Jerry?
Total of three and a half million left.
Yeah.
Jerry, in, in the beginning of your presentation, you talked about selected locations on the FHR grant. What are selected locations?
Those, the three reaches.
What's that?
The, the, the North, South and Central Reach. Those are the selected locations.
Okay. Then is there, is there going to be an opportunity to connect those? Because right now, they don't seem like they're connected.
They're not connected, but every piece helps. They're not connected. Continuity through the whole system is more money than that grant could do.
What happens when they're not connected to the property that gets hit with the, in a flood zone B or flood zone A?
What happens is where the floodplain has not been restored, it's wide. And then when it gets restored, it'll go in like this. And then when it's not restored again, it'll go out like that. It'll just go back and forth between the current flood zone and the compressed flood zone by the restored Greenway. It'll go like that between.
And so the flood would then be then, would be traveling south to north. And so i- is it safe to say that the north gets torn up more than the south in, in a, in that situation? Or do they both get torn up?
I don't even think a hydrologist could answer that because there's so many variables involved. Generally, the more water is at the lower end, which would, you'd think that would mean more hydrology forces, but I can't really say.
And then, let's see. We talked about working with, you talked about working with the KNF on that, on the, I called it Corporation or the Service Center. I think I was going to ask you and Matt, isn't that something that we've been trying to work with them on for the last year and a half or two years? And we haven't had as much luck as we would have hoped?
We have been working with KNF for a number of years. The email that Randy sent out this morning speaks to that a little in depth.
Okay, let me go on.
In regards to that, Paul, I'd say, what's that? All regards to the Forest Service. You know, clarification on that because really, we've been in the past few years saying it's in forward motion, forward motion. So I, I think we, the council really need to find out where that really lies because, don't you, Phil? I mean, that's, that's been a big question for the rest of us council.
Yeah. I was under the impression Forest Service had to move buildings and that there was about somewhere between one and 1.9 million dollars worth of work that had to be done there. Yeah, that, that we were running out of money to do it. That was my understanding, but I could be, I could have misunderstood.
The last conversation with the previous manager was that they weren't getting back to him on, on replying on this because of the COVID, the COVID thing was, a lot of that was being used. So I think we still need to have some more updated clarification on that, I would think.
Again, I'm sorry, but I haven't read that email yet, so.
I can just offer that that email is really informative, but it doesn't solve problems. It's a difficult problem.
Yeah. When you talk about widening the plane, again, I'm not a hydrologist, doesn't that make it more dangerous when you widen the plane out and you allow, you go from say 12 feet of water that's in a 30 foot combined ditch and you widen it out to, you know, 400 feet and it's only three or four feet deep? I mean, I'm just, I'm looking at from a farming standpoint, from our fields, we wouldn't want to run that water through our, our farm fields because it would just strip everything. So I.
I can just offer from a perspective of a hydrology in, and the ecosystem perspective, the water quality being probably the most important critical factor here. When you have a stream widened out and with more velocity because it's shallow and spread out, more vegetation becomes more of a sponge, which slows it down more and provides more filtration and erosion control and as well as habitat and stuff. Yeah, I, I can't really speak to that. I don't know.
Are you, does it become a spa, and I mean, I mean, does it become a sponge because more drops down into the groundwater as it goes or? So it's not just the fact that it's widening out, that it should be percolating as it goes?
Yeah. And then with this, with our town here, half of it being dredger mining, tailings, those interstitial porous places are sucking up that water, groundwater big time. But gradually over time, you would think that as you get more vegetation trapping the fine sediment, sooner or later, hopefully, it'll make a little bit difference of the surface waters that are available or not.
Okay.
But we haven't seen that. I gotta be honest, at Greenhorn Creek, we did that in 2009 and upstream from the reservoir, there's that settling pond and the creek was restored another thousand feet above that. And we haven't seen the water level come up there yet either. So it's taken a long time.
I'm sorry, I, I kept all my questions for later because you asked, not to interrupt.
Appreciate that.
I'm looking at the 2007 floodplain restoration project. I don't know if you can bring that slide up or not, Arthur. North of Overland Road, it says, quote, pipe, close quote, transformed into a, quote, sponge, close quote. Eight acres donated by Scott Kimball and then it looks like two acres that we purchased from somewhere. And what my question was, so we took prop on those two green areas, we, we took and we moved dirt from the blue area and placed it there.
And actually only on the left side, the side.
Not on the right side?
No, there was a, a operating business there and we didn't have to do it.
And I was, I assume that's probably through an agreement between the private landowner and between us.
Yes.
And then does the private landowner pay for the time that we're moving the dirt? Or do we move it gratis because we have a place to take it?
The way, it could probably work different depending on the situation, Paul, but what happened there was the landowner was glad to take the soil to raise their property out of the flood zone. And we were glad to not have to pay the trucking expenses of picking outside.
Okay. And then do we, do we guarantee that? Now, since we're altering the land, are we putting? are we putting something and I because I haven't seen anything out there. We don't put anything around it. In case it floods again, it may just hit that and undercut it and run off.
If we have a 500 flood event, we're out of business, right?
Okay, and so we're as liable as we would be. I mean, if they want to sue, they sue. If they don't want to sue, they don't sue. Okay, because I know anybody can file a lawsuit.
What does happen though is after the part of this project is that when the flood, you know, the flood levels have changed for that area, a FEMA flood mapping is redone and recalculated. So they don't all no longer have to pay for flood insurance in that spot because now it remapped.
Gotcha. Okay. Let's see. I was looking on the next page and I just had a hard time telling what the difference was. I'm seeing I'm looking at the two pictures and I'm seeing no water in one and I'm seeing water running through just kind of where the concrete used to be.
Yeah, you can't see the creek in the middle picture on top. You're right. It's there, but it's it's in between those two buttonholes.
Okay. And then on the next page, we have blue and green areas. Are the blue areas owned by the city, correct?
Not all of them.
No, or is it what will or is the green? Oh, that's just before and after. Okay.
Yeah, there's there's always sections of that that's owned by the city. Part of it's a lot of it's privately owned still.
So is that in the southern, the south reach? Or the central? So that would be the south reach, wouldn't it?
Part of your down.
Central.
That's Oberlin Road, so.
Oh, that's in the central. Okay.
No, no. This is this is a project that already completed and it has nothing to do with FHR. It just so happens you're asking and south of what Oberlin Road is in the south reach.
And those are two areas. Okay.
That and the green right there, Paul is that that big log shop? It's off Oberlin.
Oh, it's I'm sorry. I got upside down.
Oh, oh, that would be confusing.
That's that that picture's upside. Yeah.
That would be real confusing.
So with with the north reach and the central reach, and again, I'm glad you're doing this because I remember when we started on it at Jackson Street and we were very supportive of it. We all want to see it go through. Is there a reason why the north and central reach cannot be connected?
Lots of properties in between to negotiate and purchase.
Okay.
Yeah, I mean, and the money, the amount of money you'd have to have to do the floodplain work and probably buy a few houses.
So they're all have domiciles on them. They all have a building on them.
Not all of them, no. I think one thing that was interesting, the master plan author and that did this, the the green and yellow planning said that he thought there was only about five houses in the whole town that would have to be redone. I don't know that I haven't counted them out.
Okay.
That's what he thought. He said some of the properties for sure, but only five houses, he thought. But you know, we're not there. It's a long ways out in the future.
Just one nice thing is we bring it up on our iPads here or notebooks. We can expand it out.
Yeah.
So we can zoom in on on everybody's property and see what's what's what here.
It's so great.
That's handy to show him.
Master plan created KMZ, a Google Earth KMZ that you can download and you can see the entire town where the flood zone is and where the parcels are. It has a bunch of really valuable useful information.
That is.
And that's downloadable from the city website.
Okay, good.
Jerry, you also talked about using the last $140,000 and and putting it in trust.
It's it's part of the project. It's one of the project's elements. It's not really the last. It's it's dedicated to that, as I understand it, to maintenance.
Do we know if that's been done? Who does that city do that or or?
It would be the responsibility of the city.
And and have we done that? Are we earning interest on it right now? Because we've had that money for apparently some time.
Credit, but no. Or maybe Josh?
No, that's not being claimed as I think that I have records of.
Oh. Red is on. She's the city of Wai Rika.
Oh, okay. Well, that answers that. And then can you go to the north reach? I don't have a page number, I tell you.
Yeah.
What is the?
Yeah, there you go. Expand it for.
Along the freeway, the long orange area.
Little darker orange?
Yeah.
I think that is a tent at a berm of like a insulation or sound berm. It's a it's a land form. The intent was to kind of give separation between the freeway and the rest of the green line.
And so just inside that is a kind of a yellowish orange. That would be the Lenox area behind the American Gas Propane. Is that would that be safe to say?
There's the propane here.
Yeah. And that's we do. That's something the city owns already, correct? Okay, now the two, the two orange on the left, would that be the Hanley Brothers property?
Yes.
Okay, and so we do not own that.
No.
Yeah. And are they interested in selling?
We don't. We're not interested in buying. We're interested in buying just streamside lands. And so this is just a identification of a partnership opportunity. They are lower than the hundred year flood zone in much of their property. And so this would be an opportunity for them to get out of that flood zone by us taking our fill that we're moving from the Greenway excavation and giving it to them and placing it on there. It would be again, close by. We don't have to transport it. It costs a lot more to transport. No, because this will be this will be estimated so that the floodway would have been trapped and contained within the green area. Just just a side thing is the the new store they built and put in there, they elevated it up and I imagine it's because of flood requirements. I don't know for sure.
On the on the dollar?
Yeah.
Yeah, okay. And you answered that. Do you have any idea, Jerry, what Forest Service is doing as far as moving buildings there?
Nothing.
No, okay, because I know you.
I do know. Actually, I do know that when I retired in 2012.
Been a while.
But at that time, they were already not using many of the small buildings on the east side of the creek. And they were, in some cases, the soils lab was being vacated. I mean, they were eliminating some stuff out of there, our uses out of there.
Yeah, I know some of the buildings we used for tree planting for students.
Yeah.
And so we would grow everything there and then take it out and plant them. So and then I guess one last question. You talked about, you know, three sellers, three people that want to sell property now. What are those properties?
No, I what I indifferent what they each of these reaches, there's a certain amount of willing sellers. Like one has three and one has two. I don't remember the numbers, but they basically there are roughly three sellers per reach and and the there's from appraisals then. And they are we rejected those appraisals. Some of them did. And so and some of them are real strategic.
That's all I'll say. I won't ask any. Well, who am I kidding? Okay, so the so the email I got today, pardon me for keeping my mask down for a second while I read this. So the one paragraph contracted city contracted city project engineers came to an impasse with the Forest Service engineers on project design. The entire infrastructure of the site, gas, power, sewer, telecom, replacement buildings, et cetera, were discussed at length, reviewed and designed. The bridge design for replacement proved one of the largest challenges. The hydrology of the side is affected by its placement, length and height from the creek. Additional topographical topography, something like that, survey was completed to prove the project would carry the intended flow while maintaining the operational needs of the Forest Service during fire season period. Due to supply chain shortages and numerous larger projects, city project engineers have been unable to find a supplier able to provide a quote for the custom preformed bridge deck. In an email from the forest supervisor on February 2, 2021, I've directed our engineering department to dedicate no additional time on the project until they hear otherwise from forest leadership. My hope is that after regrouping, you might have a different project for us to collectively consider and reengage on. I hope that helps. What do you mean by SO?
It doesn't state in here, but it is.
For many years?
Patty retired last May, in the May, this May, May or June. Yeah, she said Rotary and she announced it at Rotary. She was in DC and working at places that she, yeah, she officially left in first of June or something.
And so you think don't you think that that was her statement?
I thought it was, but I'm not sure.
It doesn't sound to me like something Patty was writing.
No.
It doesn't. It doesn't sound to me like Patty does.
But I I don't know who wrote this. That's what came in the email. But the other part was staff worked diligently to keep the project moving and to meet the March 1. See, this is about the 1600 permit for this specific project. Made the March 1 CDFW permit deadline to clarify previous discussions. This is a wholly separate 1600 then required for the annual maintenance of Wai Rika Creek performed by the maintenance division. The incomplete areas, because they did, they were notified in writing, incomplete notice, there's a timeframe that they are required to respond and make so they have to start all over again, basically. The incomplete area spoken to in the March 1 letter simply could not be answered until a design was understood and accepted by all entities. Public Works is working to set a meeting with the Forest Service to discuss a conceptual path forward and to bring the project to completion by June 30, 2023. So today, I think, is on the line. And if he has anything to add, it would be appreciated, appreciated.
Hello, good evening. Can you hear me?
Yes. Do you have anything to add, ma'am?
Um, I would just add that the department is very much supportive of the Wai Rika Creek flood hazard reduction central reach project. We did put an incomplete on file. It was after a mutual time extension of oh, nine months, I want to say, July 17, 2020 to February 27 of 2021, there's a typo on our letter. Our apologies there. We did ask for US Forest Service to participate with us and part of that had to do with a site visit that we brought our engineers out with and Forest Service was present. Our hope was to kind of help blend the needs of our department and engineering with the Forest Service to alleviate any city concerns or work together with the city. That did not take place and as a result, we could not keep that mutual time extension in place. And subsequently, that incomplete letter was sent on March 1. At this time, like I said, we are very much interested. The department did put comments forward during the sequel process for the Greater Greenway Master Plan. And those comments should be revisited as you look at future projects. I'm happy to consult on those as there may be still some outstanding actions taken with future projects within the Greenway Master Plan area and certainly any land use changes. Likely they have to go back and revisit it.
If if I may ask one question, so if I understand correctly, they have to resubmit starting from square one and there will we also be paying the permit fee again as well?
So the it has been six months since March 1. We reserve the right at six months to close that file and require the applicant being the city to notify again and start over. We have not done that yet on this file. I don't believe we will, but that decision is for a higher power than I. I would encourage the city to work with us if they would like to capture this under the current incomplete notification and make some forward progress. Again, our engineers are willing to help. We can't do the heavy lifting, but we are happy to facilitate the process for compliance on our 1600.
One more question. When the city is coming close to the end of the timeframe they are supposed to be working in is do we also have the option of asking for an extension at that time? And if so, how many times can we ask for an extension?
Well, so that goes back to the initial timeframe of 1600, Councilperson Debbie aired. And so would they notify the city notified on July 17, the department has 30 days to respond whether we feel the notification is complete, meaning we can either deem it that we need an agreement moving forward for further protections of resources as that there's significant alteration of bed bank and channel or that we feel the project can stand as is and you can move forward. And we worked with the city both on August 13 and again on December 9 with mutual time extensions, meaning that we recognized the city had some additional work that needed to be done to complete their application. It wasn't necessarily just on them. There's other folks. It tends to happen with large projects. And we agreed mutually to work together for that to not do a formal incomplete. On February 27 of 2021, that is when we decided we could not do a third mutual time extension and we wrote the incomplete letter. At this point, my recommendation to the city would be to move forward on this incomplete and make some progress with a timeline of how you would remedy a complete notification package. Or there may be at a higher level than mine, closing that file. Thank you.
Yes, thank you.
Corey, I'm sorry. I know you're waiting patiently.
On those parcels in question that you said there are some interested sellers, when was those appraisals done? When was that negotiated?
That's something the city does.
Has that been a while, though?
I don't know.
Because that would probably, I mean, depending on the proper usage with today's market, I'm in the real estate business with today's market. Things could have changed. So I'm assuming that they were not this owners were not accepted to the low price that came in, correct?
That's a likely interpretation.
Okay, okay. So if it was done a while ago, it could probably be worth the revisit.
Yeah.
On those parcels. Okay.
I don't know.
Thank you, Jerry.
I don't know. That's why I was just gonna ask the West Council. Do you remember when we were given that information on the appraisals? Because it's had to been.
It's been years.
Had to be quite a while. I think I was, I think I was on council, so I think.
Yeah, it was before you got on council.
I think I was just on council.
And when did you come on? Because we came on in fourteen.
Sixteen.
Sixteen, yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, we had enough.
Yeah, it had to been around then, I would assume. So that's something we definitely would have to look into in the future also. For sure, um, okay, we have some other questions?
We've been working, I just have one question, Jerry, you can answer this question or Matt. How long have we been working on this project? Because I know there was five million dollars that were working.
The public release that we were looking at the other day, I think it said, um, the city's public release, I think that was in February of two thousand twelve.
But wait, I have it right here.
I do, February sixteenth, twenty twelve.
Good. I mean, I know that you guys kept going back to the play and, and until you actually got the grant, two grants, correct?
Yeah, oh, yeah, over the years.
So good job of that, I was, um, uh, disheartened, if you will, to hear that there's so many people that are not. Willing to, uh. Work with us on this question of Forest Service, but I know you said there's some key properties that are not willing to sell.
Well, I, I'm, I don't know, at that point, yes. I'm persistent. I would hope that we could be persistent about those.
But Corey's right, you know, they, uh, I think markets changed quite a bit since we got closed, so.
Appraisals could be different.
Yeah, a lot different.
Yes, Mr. Johnson.
I, I think it's difficult for, just the most to answer these questions because a lot of the negotiations went on between cities. And there were meetings with the council in closed session and there were no reports.
Right.
Back to them. And I doubt anybody on this council was a part of that, so we don't know. Yes, I, we could find out, but, yeah, a lot of those negotiations are just not known to us at this point.
Well, a lot of stuff is, uh, past is near, I know it was, was unfortunately put on a back burner, so. Covid or whatever you want to call the problem, but it was put on the back burner unfortunately. Couple of questions for you, Jerry. Moving forward, what would be your interpretation of the next focus spot? That you would think would be the, the most impact? I mean, my, me looking at it, I would say the north, the north reach would probably be the best since we already own a bunch of that property.
Do you, do you mean for?
To move forward on something, to the next stage on something.
Do you mean purchase or restoration or both?
Possibly, yeah, purchase or just moving forward on how we address that, because I know, like I said, the north reach, we own. A big strip of that through there to accommodate that, I know there'd be other purchases to, to, to do that and to enhance that area, but. Um, what is, what is your interpretation? What would be the next goal? I mean, in your eyes?
I don't have the information the city has about the details of the correspondence with the sellers.
Right.
But given in general. If we can't make it work at the central reach, which I hope we can. Then the next, I mean, we did plan on both purchase and restoration at the north reach. Parts of that, the sellers, at least one seller. Uh, I would really want to contact them first before we started the final design for that restoration of that reach. Because it could include pieces, possibly pieces that. They would be allowed, willing to sell and others not. Uh, it just seems like that communication could happen and then we could know for sure what lands we have available to, to. Focus on now for restoration with this grant.
So you're.
Similarly, the south reach, um, same thing.
Southeast reach would be, would be worked on next, you think would be, I mean, I guess.
It could be worked on next.
Okay.
Also, uh, because even if, um. One land or owner on one side of the creek doesn't want to participate, the other side.
Other side.
Could, and right now I understand is favorable. And that could be really, the two options is north and south reaches. And delaying the central.
Because like in the south reach, I know, uh, re- just recently that was purchased. On a chunk of that was just recently purchased by a, an individual in town, I know. And I don't know, at that point, I don't think we have, as a city or anybody has reached out to that individual recently that I know of. And spoken with them on that. I know that, and then we have a couple, at least one chunk of that south reach too.
In conjunction with Matt Bray, who probably has information he can share with us regarding parcels that were being negotiated. Or Reddit.
Does it, does it make sense, council, it looks like we, and city manager and your, um. It was always Mr. and Mrs. Mosher, Mr. and Mrs. Mosher, Mr. Mosher. Does it make sense that we all are behind this pro, we all support this project? We're all a little bit frustrated in the fact that things have been so slow. Um, this is the first time since I've been, I think that we've had a, a real good discussion, we've had some discussions, Matt's been in on those and so has. Our previous city manager, we have some good discussions. Uh, but does it make sense that we maybe, uh. Put it on for an agenda item or put it on for a workshop, say in, again, in, in early October. So that we could have, um, Matt, uh, either interim or new city manager, okay? Not, not, I'm not trying to throw you under the bus, yeah, I see that. Uh, Mr. Mosher here. Um, and the rest of us to kind of start maybe with, with, with Mr. Mosher and Matt's guidance. To begin, and maybe Reddow, well, or Josh. Um, to begin to look at the monies, the properties, the restoration work. And maybe to try and put a plan together for the next. Eighteen to twenty-four months so that money can be used for what it was meant to be. So that it, and, and I hate to say this, but so that it does get spent, and I can remember when you started this, Jerry, because. Um, Cindy Hammer was way into this. And so you said eighty-eight or eighty-nine, she was way into this and, I mean, she had her kids out there all the time, I was teaching fifth grade and she was teaching fourth. Who? No, no, that's great, I appreciate it. Um, so I'm, I'm asking and then I'll, I'll, I'll shut up. Um, if that might be a way to go and I'm, I'm done.
I think it's something we need to address, yes.
I, there were two items that he requested at the beginning of the meeting. The city proceed with, and one of them was exactly what you just said, but what he was suggesting, I think. Is that the committee that he serves on, which is representatives of several other agencies. Meet with staff and council, form a member of the council and figure out how to move this forward. So, it's a great idea.
I, I think, I tend to agree with. They have, everybody has. Yeah. An interest and some people have. Only thing, only thing.
But anything, the committee that he's suggesting, that would just increase communication between staff and the committee. Would be reported back to the whole council. So I think you're getting what you want. If you just want more action and more, uh, information. But the committee that represents, which was the original partner.
Yes.
For this whole thing, they would also like some communication, I have promised them at this moment in time. That I will see that they get it, and so it'll be through the office of the city manager. New city manager may change that, that's up to him or her. Uh, but that's what we're, we're trying to do at this moment in time, so first of all, we got you the information on. The status of the grants, what money is left.
Yes, that's good.
The next step, well, we all need to communicate through that and they want to be a partner in that.
Absolutely. So I think at this stage. Yes, go ahead, Jerry.
Paul's, I know, I might misinterpret it, but. Paul, um, suggested that we talk maybe in public about purchases and acquisitions and.
Yeah, that's what I was just gonna comment on. Of purchases of property and stuff is probably something we shouldn't do in an open forum necessarily.
I'm concerned, I'm just concerned that we might unduly pressure willing sellers. In the wrong way that closes them down.
Yeah. No, that, and that's very good, that's, I was, that was a point I was just gonna get ready to make on that is that we shouldn't, on that, we should have some communication, but. Not necessarily, uh, drive out into the open and some of that sort yet, just to where we can figure out where we need to be. But I feel, do feel that, um, I don't know what the rest of council feels, but. The, open the lines of communication like you just said, with the organization. Open that up, get some discussion going, and then I think we do need to schedule, uh, some type of, of workshop. And with, with in conjunction to, we're not necessarily gonna say purchasing the properties or whatever like that. But we need to find out what those properties are for one thing. Um, but we also need to know what the best line of attack would be in the next, the next phase. Like what Jerry's saying, we need, um, would it be the south, the central or the north? Section of that was what we need to tackle because by looking at all three of them, I think it's probably not as real, totally realistic, but. Focusing on one area would be probably more realistic, um, on that aspect, yes, Jerry.
In the grant, we were committed to all three.
All three, okay, good to know, see, that's, that's.
Terms of purchase, uh, or restoration.
Okay.
Most hydrologists would tell you, you start downstream, you want to do your improvements where the water is gonna end up. If you start upstream, then you're gonna flood downstream, so you start that way and work up. So I would assume from a generic standpoint, that's what it's gonna be, but. Let's get people who really know what they're talking about involved.
Well, then, and, yeah, they've already, they've already done all that research and have all that knowledge and so, yeah, having, having that brought forward, so. Yes, like I said, this stage to have you guys do some.
They have people on their committee, this is what they do.
Yeah.
So, yeah, we'd like to get their input.
So, we, yes, David.
I, I, that was after you finished. I wasn't trying to interrupt you, when you're done.
Oh, so, um, you know, I think in, in a timely manner, because I think all the. Oh, all of us would agree that we've, we've, uh, seems like we've been spinning our wheels for quite a while now. Um, so if there's any chance that you guys can meet and get stuff moving forward, so we can. Schedule some type of workshop before you leave us.
We'd be happy to put that together.
So, yes, that would be, I think, it'd be great to be able to move forward and, yes, David.
So, uh, Jerry, if you decide you need a subcommittee or an ad hoc committee. I would certainly be willing to volunteer for, uh, sitting on that committee and also before we finish up and everything. I would like to know if, uh, Matt has any more information? That we have, we've heard very little from him regarding the status of any of these. Uh, three reaches and property, what they've negotiated. If they have not, no names, no addresses, if they've negotiated with any, uh, people, I suspect that both. Uh, Redda and Matt are aware of which properties have been discussed. I don't care about which ones, I care about which reach they're in and if it was successful or not.
Perfect, so I agree, um, is that okay, Randy, to have one of them, they have any information to discuss that right now, if they.
If he's prepared to answer, sure.
Matt, did you hear that?
I, I did hear that, thank you, Debbie, um, I do not have all of the pertinent information to answer that succinctly tonight. But I'd be more than happy to get that together for you. Um, as Mr. Mosher spoke to certain parcels. When acquisitions as real property should be spoken to in a closed session.
Right.
So I think one of the questions that Debbie was actually presenting is, is, uh, you know, on a ways that. Certain properties, but even if we could figure out what section that was.
Yes.
That would be helpful and that we could that be more. Thought out of an open forum type thing, as well as, you know, its sections and not get specific on those individuals.
Yes, I can map that up very simply for a discussion point, for sure.
Great, okay, that's awesome. Okay, well then, is there any other questions by the council, other than I think we just, we just clarified?
Yes.
Clarify what we are asking the city manager to do.
We are asking him to get in touch with the organization. And then get back to us on a set date for a, uh, open session and possibly a closed session too. Is this correct? Is this what I got from the rest of councils, is, okay?
No, that's fine, and did you want to appoint a council member to do that with me, meeting with this group? I certainly heard one that's willing.
Yeah, I think we should have, I would, I would like to see two, two members.
I, I still would say that I prefer that we're all there.
Yeah.
We're all, no, we're all there, not at the meeting, we're all there at the table in front of discussing, not two of five, I'm gonna stand with that.
This is just for their.
I understand, I'm gonna stand with that.
Okay.
And then it could be said in there, it can be said in here.
And again, anytime I get information, I'm gonna update the entire council, not just the two people. The two people are just gonna participate in discussions.
Understood, but I still, I, I would rather have five council, city council, this is important enough. This is drawn on long enough that we need five council members, you've got five very diverse personalities. Five very diverse looks at this. And, um, I think that it behooves us to have all five involved in a meeting here and not meeting in subcommittees. Across the way.
So I, I think we, I would, when I, when I've been looking at this as they'll meet. With, like you said, the subcommittees, but it's just like what we do with our homeless subcommittees, okay? That's, that's what I'm looking at, is we have our homeless subcommittee, we doing that and then we, we bring back any decision making comes back to the whole council. Any information gets back, brought back to the whole council. And by doing this, I, I like that idea of having at least two people sitting down the table with them because. Sometimes they might catch something that Randy doesn't know because he's new to the game on this. And maybe something that Matt's or somebody else might not say anything about, but. You know, Debbie's had the experience and Corey's gonna be brought to speed real quick. Um, but then somebody will be present on those meetings also and then report back. And help the, us making decision making, because they might, will elaborate on something that's brought into that meeting that. Um, might not get, you know, spoken about with not, if somebody's not there, so. It's a three point seven million dollar grant, this has been going on for years. Correct. It's been going on for two years that I've been on and longer than that. Frustrating. Whatever it is, whether it's lack of communication, doesn't matter whose part is on, lack of work on it, doesn't matter whose part is on. I, I think all five of us, I'm gonna scan, all five of us need to be involved, they need to be meeting in this room. All five council members, bring in department heads. Jerry can come in here, we can just, anything that they can discuss in there, they can discuss in here. And then we can, we need to go into closed session, we'll go into closed session, we'll bring whoever in, we need like Jerry to add one of them or a couple of their members to come in. Property issues, I, I mean, it's just, it's gone on a long.
Yeah.
Oh, it definitely has. Definitely has.
Another, I mean, I, again, I don't know, uh, council, how many years has it gone on?
A long time, since I was on the board of supervisors.
Yes, please.
Okay, thank you. Um, I just wanted to let you know. I just wanted to let you know that I am totally comfortable with Mayor Protem Baird. And council member Middleton meeting and discussing and bringing things up to date. And then bringing it back to the council for us to discuss, no decisions will be made. Just discussion and keeping it on the front burner instead of the back burner. It's easier to have a committee meeting than it is to, you know, to send all of the notices and have us all here, so I'm totally comfortable. It's easier to have a committee meeting than it is to, you know, to send all of the witnesses and have us all here. So I'm totally comfortable uh, with these two council members meeting, and, uh, you, you're familiar with the project, getting more information, making sure that it's going forward. And then bringing information back to us before any decisions are made, I'm totally.
And I am not uncomfortable, but I am uncomfortable with not all five of us being involved. I would ask one more caveat, and that would be that we involve Janay Stroud or her.
Janay's on the line too.
Janay, are you on the line?
I am, Paul, but I'm having a hard time hearing you. Could you speak into the mic?
I'm recommending that you or someone from your office would be a party to any of these meetings for planning.
I will do my best. I am happy to be a support to the city and to the process.
Yeah, I can't make that decision, but I'm just recommending, okay?
Yeah, I can make sure that myself or someone else, I will try for it to be someone consistent, possibly two of us, so that we can make sure that we do not, um, step behind in a decision-making position for those meetings to move forward.
Right.
I cannot support a subcommittee going across the way.
I'm so in the. Yeah, and I, I understand that. I, I think it, it must, it would speed things up, having a subcommittee and moving forward as. Okay. I have at no point in time suggested a subcommittee. What I was suggesting, when I meet with these people at their meeting, because they hold their own meetings.
Right.
If a couple council, a council person wishes to go with me, just to hear what's going on at their meeting and to hear my presentation, their presentation, help me bring the information back, that's all. I'm not suggesting any decision-making. A council person, you know, cannot represent the council without authorization.
Right.
So I haven't heard anybody give anybody authorization to cut a deal or do anything. I'm not suggesting a subcommittee at all.
Interim city manager, then are you suggesting, uh, that anybody other than you and the count, and the two city councilmen sit in the meeting, or would it just be you, and then you disseminate back to Public Works and, uh, Finance Director? That's.
I, I would probably ask somebody on staff to go to the meeting, because as you said before, I don't have the information.
No, I just want to qualify it, because I just want to qualify it, so, yeah.
But we've never had a council member, one or two, uh, be involved in moving the process along. And so it isn't like it died here, the, you know, the, uh, whatever the issues were for slowing it down, arrived from a different perspective. I'd also like to point out, not to change the subject, but with the Highway Three project coming up, we need to get this squared away and kind of moving along before we tackle that. Because after that starts, I think we're gonna be consumed.
I'm sure of that. All that, we, we need to know what direction we need to go with this. Just because the money and everything else that's involved in that, even though this is a grant, I get that, but there always still becomes some type of money issue that the city's involved in, other than the grant, too, so. Yeah, money-wise, it'd be a major deal. So I guess, getting back to the, getting back to that then. Um, are you guys, you know, I would say at this point, we need to arrange a meeting with them, and.
It's, it's my intention to contact them, ask them when they can meet, and then I'll go to their meeting.
Correct.
Um, hopefully the council people can make it. And, you know, I will figure out what staff people to take, and then we'll come back with a report.
Okay. That way we can make a game plan at that point in time.
Can we keep moving forward?
Yes, definitely keep moving forward, so.
Yeah, I'll probably come back with a report, saying that we're gonna meet again. But that's, I mean, that's, that's how this stuff goes. We'll exchange information, which will lead to questions.
Awesome. Okay, any other comments, questions?
Reda?
Reda, do you have anything you want to add?
Uh, no, I think that's a great moving forward step. Um, I did recap the numbers spent, um, through June thirtieth, um, twenty twenty, and that was one point two million on the grant.
One point two.
One point two million that's left?
No, that was spent, always.
Three point seven left.
Three point eight. One point two from five. Wouldn't that be three point eight?
Yeah, it's close.
Yeah.
I heard three point seven and one point one four, so I don't know.
Right, that was June thirtieth of last year. Thank you.
Thank you.
Jerry, you got something to add?
Just, uh, repeat what Paul said earlier, uh, about the cost of the central reach. And the bridge expense is going to be up to possibly one, two million, almost one point nine million dollars. If that is deferred, uh, that makes everything else much more possible.
So now that this, this, that central reach, is that the Oberlin Bridge?
That's a forest service, uh, um, reach, and, uh, there are options that have not, uh, the forest might not accept this, but there's options of not building the bridge.
Oh.
And maybe giving them access another way, or, uh, going to work on the county land adjacent and not working with the forest. There's other you know, things that we could do and defer the forest. There's a, the, uh, Greenway Master Plan author is very interested in helping, and he, uh, yes. He, he's the one that laid out several options that I shared with Randy. They, and I, I'm sure Randy hasn't had a chance to even look at them, but he's, he's got the entire watershed in his brain. Um, and he knows a lot of options and choices and benefits and things like that, that are really important.
Yeah.
I think that he's not a member of the City Gardens Parks and Greenway Association, but he's a, uh, individual that's probably committed to do it pro bono.
That would be good, because he's also been a paid, uh, part of putting all those things together. He's done a lot of good work.
Yeah, so anyway.
One other question, Jerry, speaking, going back to the Oberlin Bridge, the Oberlin Bridge, I know that, uh, I don't know if the rest of council remembers that. We had, had discussion on that at one point in time, and I know that there was some, some restrictions there too on water flow going through there without modifying that bridge. Is that something, do you know anything about?
The Oberlin Road Bridge?
Yeah.
I don't know very much about it.
Okay.
Honestly.
I thought it had to be widened.
Former manager, I know, he, we had discussion with him about that bridge. Especially of having that, so.
Yes, there are a number of bridges, oh, across Wyrica Creek, over the length of town. And when you look at the hydrology, I think all of them are pinch points for the flow. So there have been discussions about future, as, as Jerry spoke to. Um, some of these projects are, are years and years out, will future grants, but, uh, when you, when you take an incised creek that, also that Jerry spoke to, that has dug itself deep over the years, and then the city or the county or whoever it was at the time installed a bridge just to gap that. Um, this project is flaying the creek wide open, so there's obviously bridge work required, um, all the way through town, so.
Thank you, Matt. All righty then, unless there's any other questions, then we'll just. Add some other information.